The meeting to order for November seventh, twenty twenty-three. Councilmember Cavallari, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Um clerk, could we please go through the roll call now?
Mayor Holt's cloth. Mayor Pro Tem Vignil.
Here.
Councilmember Cavallari.
Here.
Councilmember Steckler.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
Councilmember Duque.
Here.
And Councilmember Paddock.
Present.
Mayor Holt's call told us last week, or was it last week or week before last that he would not be here tonight? Do we have a motion to excuse?
So move second.
Have motion as next. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, before we start the meeting, I would like to get your permission to move item eleven A on our agenda tonight to go after our public hearings because that would move that so that we can have that discussion before we are talking about the ordinance. Everybody agree? Perfect. So moved. Now I'd like to move on to audience communication. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak tonight? No, everybody looks happy. Um anybody online that would like to speak this evening? Will's good. Okay, perfect. We will now close the public comment time then. Now we're going to move on to our first public hearing. So um I think does Armina speak first, or do I immediately go and read the script? That confused me.
Start with the script.
Start with script. Okay, perfect. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing related to the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four Biondian budget amendment. Director of Finance Armina Lombad will be presenting. The hearing will be conducted under the rules for legislative public hearings set forth in resolution twenty-two-one-six-zero-four. We adopted these rules as part of our work on the governance manual. I will briefly summarize procedures for public hearing. First, we will receive a brief staff report on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Biondian budget amendment. Following the staff report and responses to any questions that council may have, I will ask for a motion to open the public hearing. Next, assuming that there is a motion, a second and an affirmative vote, we will open the public hearing. The hearing will last up to one hour unless council votes to authorize additional time. Persons wishing to testify and who are present or present in council chambers shall sign in on the sign sheet and we will be called will be called in the order in which they have signed up. Persons participating online also will be given an opportunity to testify by raising their hands and I will call on them. Each person's testimony is limited to three minutes. When all who asked to speak have completed their testimony or the allotted one-hour time limit has expired, I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing. Are there any questions? If not, could staff start us off with the presentation?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Good evening, um councilmembers, staff, and those um joining us virtually as well as those in the council chambers. So um the public hearings that you're going to hear tonight are were all published at the on the um Daily Herald last October thirty-one. Um the materials that you're seeing tonight are pretty much the same, substantially the same as what you've seen before in the last two um discussions. So I'm just gonna go through them um pretty quickly, but please feel free to interrupt or if you have any questions. Okay, so um for our agenda, we are going to go uh review the timeline, the background, the forecast of revenues and expenditures, the proposed budget modifications, and then open it up for the public hearing. Um as you know, we've had previous discussions um regarding this item um and the um the the study session was held on October three. We had the first public hearing regarding this item on October twenty-four, and today is the final hearing. Um and then we will have the adoption of the ordinances on the fourth on November fourteen. So the following are the provisions governing the process that we're going through today, the R C W thirty-five A dot thirty-four, one-thirty, and M C uh Mill Creek, a municipal code three point zero, two point zero six. Ordinance twenty-two-two-eight-eight-six was adopted November twenty-nine, twenty-two-two for approving or adopting the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four Biondian budget. Um for our general fund forecast, the general fund revenues are projected to be at twenty-three point nine million, and um primarily seventy-five percent of our sources of our revenue sources are from taxes. About thirty-nine percent or nine point three million is sales tax, and then um regular property taxes are about two point um, excuse me, eight point six million, of which about um four point three million is projected for twenty-twenty-four, um including add-ons. Our charges for um goods and services makes up two point one million, and this reflects a reduction of about three hundred and seventy-nine thousand um from passport fees, uh law enforcement, F R O, and our development services fees, as well as rental um for facilities and recreation. Uh one point six million for our miscellaneous fines and fees, um and this is primarily um greater than, or it includes rather the um investment interest that we have been projecting um at about running about average of five per five percent earnings in twenty-twenty-three and then four percent in twenty-twenty-four. And this also includes the ARPA funding that we are proposing to transfer from um, excuse me, ARPA interest investments, investment interest that we're proposing to transfer into the general fund. Also, we have our inter-fund or intergovernmental revenues at one point two million, and there are licenses and fees for one point one million. Our general fund expenditures were projected at twenty-three point four million. Um wages, um overtime and benefits make up about uh fourteen point nine million or sixty-four percent. And our um maintenance and operations, which includes the professional services and supplies, make up about thirty-four percent. And then our transfers to the equipment replacement makes up about three percent of the expenditures. Um the bar graph that you're seeing right now um provides the revenues uh by by funding source in relat- in relation to our expenditures. And this shows the council's priorities of funding police and public works, which makes up about fifty-eight percent of our expenditures. And to fund the police, it takes about one hundred percent of our sales tax and about twenty-four percent of our property taxes. Then then the rest of uh the property taxes are used to support um public works, community development, and finance, and a portion of the city manager's office. And the remaining six million or twenty-five percent of the revenues fund the rest of the city's um operation. For twenty-twenty-four, we are projecting personnel cost to be at seven point seven-six million, and about ninety-one percent of it is general fund, and then the rest, about nine percent, is funded from um other funds. Um and as you could tell, uh the um this this amount of seven point six, almost the eight million, does not include any retroactive um salary adjustments due from the pending police guild, as we've mentioned previously. And the um seven point eight uh million also includes the four percent increase from our um medical benefit rates. The uh special revenue funds, the revenue um estimate are primarily greater than the budget, and that's from because of the investment interest earnings that we've been getting. Um the expenditure estimates are going to be uh less than the budget, except for the City Hall North Fund. Also note that the special revenue includes the opioid settlement fund, um the new fund that we're proposing so that we could comply with the settlement negotiation, excuse me, settlement agreements that we um that council approved sometime in twenty-twenty-two and early this year. Um our debt services um has also an adjustment of about eighty-seven hundred um to account for the additional property tax revenue and the uh refund of that as well. For our capital projects, our REIT estimates are going to be less than the budget, and this is offset by state grants and county grants and also by investment um earnings. But expenditure estimates are going to be less than the budget because of the deferred projects. Our enterprise fund, which is the surface water, will also have um revenues greater estimates greater than the budget because of the investment earnings, and then their expenditures are expected to be less than the budget because of other deferred projects. The internal service fund, which includes the equipment replacement, and the unemployment self-insurance funds are going to be, their revenue is going to be greater because of the investment earnings, but the expenditures are going to be less or about equal to what we've budgeted. So the proposed budget modifications are found on stamp on exhibit A under stamp page eight of one of four of your um agenda um packets. And that includes the first um proposed modification, which is to adjust the fund balance from to to reflect the actual as of January one of twenty-twenty-three. That's about a five point one percent uh million in net increase. We're also proposing um several uh revenue and expenditure increases with a net change of about fifty-one thousand. Um and these detail are found on exhibit B of stamp page pages nine and ten of the of the packet. Um and for our next steps, we will hold the public hearing. Um and then we would like to obtain final direction from council regarding those proposed budget modifications. And then we would um come back to council for the final adoption on November four. That concludes my report, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Director Lombad. Um do I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing. Second.
We will now open the public hearing at six twelve P M. Oh, did I need, do we need to vote on it? Or we just do the motion in a second? Okay, sorry. Motion say, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We will now open the public hearing still at six twelve P M. Um. Okay, I would now like to open up the the hearing for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak to the topic discussed? Do we have anyone that has signed up on the sign-up sheet to just to um speak tonight? No. Okay, um does anyone else in the room want to speak that has not signed up? Does anyone online want to speak? No, everybody is like no tonight. Okay, um. I will now close the public comment section of the public hearing. Does the council wish to speak or add to the topic of the public hearing at this time? Okay, um do I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
I have a motion and a second. This time I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I will now close the public hearing at six fourteen P M. Okay, moving on. The next item, the next item on the agenda is the public hearing related to the twenty-twenty-four property tax levy. Director of Finance Armina Lombad will be presenting. Could staff start us off with the presentation? Um. My stuff's just slightly different.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um. Um, okay, um so the um so tonight will is the public here, final public hearing for the regular property taxes for levy for twenty-twenty-four. Um for this item, we will review the timeline again. Brief background, the twenty-twenty-four probably tax levy amount options, and then we'll open it up for public hearing. Okay, so the the timeline is the same as what you've seen earlier, so I'm going to skip that. Um for this uh for the for this uh exercise, the governing provisions are R C W eighty-four dot five-two dot zero-two-zero, which uh requires that we certify and file the budget or estimates of the amounts to be raised for taxation in R C W eighty-four dot fifty-five dot one-twenty, which requires the public hearing prior to the filing of of the amounts to the county. Um the table above uh represents the historical levy from twenty-seventeen to twenty-twenty-three. Um the column headers uh provides you the uh components of the property taxes. So we have the levy rate per A V, per thousand A V, the levy amounts and the assessed value. Um except for twenty-twenty-three, the levy amounts per thousand shows a steady decline um with the levy amount, however, increasing over the years. And it's because the assessed value continues to grow with a year-over-year increase of at least nine percent. Um except for twenty-twenty-three, when it jumped, the assessed value jumped uh with an average of thirty-five percent. But that year also reflects the city's annexation of the fire um and EMS services to the South County excuse me, Snap, South Snohomish County Fire and Rescue Authority as approved by majority of the voters during the April twenty-twenty-two special elections. This um probably tax distribution is from twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two-three and provides you with all the taxing agencies in um within our um area, and that includes Snohomish County, South Snohomish County Fire Rescue, the State School, the City of Mill Creek, Central Puget Sound Regional Transit Authority, the Snohomish Library and the School District. Um the average levy rate in the city was right about nine dollars sixty cents per A V in twenty-twenty-one. Um and it went down to eight point seventy-five per thousand in twenty-twenty-two with approximately only eighteen percent going to the city. And then in twenty-twenty-three, the average was at um eight point sixteen or um over with over sixty-seven percent or five dollar fifty-one cents going to schools, to the schools, the state schools and the school district. And only about sixty-two percent um or uh six percent is going to the city of Mill Creek. So as you've heard earlier, the general fund forecast through December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four, um the revenue is projected to be at twenty-three point nine million, and then expenditures um coming to twenty-three point four million. And the projected um ending fund balance will be at nine point five million uh December thirty-one of twenty-twenty-four. So the forecast, the general fund forecast assumes a four point three million for the property taxes in twenty-twenty-four, which excludes, and it also excludes any retroactive salaries as we've mentioned earlier. Based on the preliminary um assessed valuation citywide um from Snohomish County, the aggregate um city assessed value went down from um six point seven billion to six point three million. That's about a five point seventy-five percent decline in um citywide. Um and so the, since the assessed value is one of the components for the property tax calculation, that means that without changing the levy amount, um the levy rate would increase by zero three eight one cents or a six-ten, six point ten percent increase. And so the impact of the property owner with an average value, whole value of a million, would be about thirty-eight dollar and eight cents. In your packets, we um have two options. Um at the study session in uh October ten, council uh directed us to remove option C, which was the uh the one percent was the back capacity plus the add-ons. So today we're just looking at two options. Um the and these options are found in um stamp pages thirty-five and thirty-six of the packet. And option ones you're seeing here, assuming um and so this assessed value is going to be constant between the options. Um if we uh if we don't have an increase and just take the add-ons for new construction as well as the refunds, that would provide a seventy thousand dollar um revenue increase oh year-over-year. Um and the levy rate would increase from point sixty-two forty-seven per thousand assessed value to point six-seven-three-seven um per thousand. Um that's a point zero four nine, excuse me, point zero four nine one or a seven point eighty-five percent increase um between the two years. And so what does what does that look like to our um individual property owners? And what I've done, instead of the ten percent decline uh for the sensitivity, I was using five point seventy-five um percent um change to mimic or to be consistent with the citywide change in value. And so with a homeowner um whose property's value declined by five point seventy-five percent from one from one million in twenty-twenty-three to nine hundred forty-two thousand five hundred in twenty-twenty-four, their um property tax would increase by ten dollar and thirty-one cents. That's a one point seven percent increase. If there was no change in the assessed value of the property owner, so they will remain a million dollars, their property taxes would increase by forty-nine dollar and five cents or a seven point nine percent increase. Whereas if the property owner um assessed value increased by five point seventy-five from one million to one million fifty-seven thousand five hundred, their um property taxes would go up by eighty seven um eighty-seven point seventy-nine dollars or fourteen point one percent. And reviewing option B, which is a one percent increase over the prior year um levy amount plus the add-ons, would provide us with a hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-eight additional revenue. Um the levy rate would increase um from point six-two-four-seven to point six-eight-zero-four. That's a zero point zero-five-five-seven increase or a nine or eight point nine one percent. And so for the property owners, again, their assumption is the same. If it changes from a million dollars and it goes down to nine hundred and forty-two five hundred, the um increase to the property owner would be sixteen dollar and fifty-nine fifty-six cents, two point seven percent increase. If there were no change to the assessed value of the property owners, so it stays at a million dollars, their property taxes would increase fifty-five dollar and sixty-eight cents or eight point nine percent. Whereas if the property increases but from one thousand to one thousand fifty-seven five hundred, their property tax would increase by ninety-four dollars eighty cents or fifteen point two percent increase. Um this is a side-by-side comparison of option A and option B, and then comparing it with what we have in twenty-twenty-three. Um. And so again, factors to consider for the levy amount setting would be our increasing cost um to um support the level of service improvement and any other anticipated cost related to that. Also, we have decreasing revenues, um our sales tax, um investment earnings, and then our our uh fund balances we start to um use the funding for the projects that you've approved, um which in turn provides us with the additional revenue from the investment earnings. So for our next steps, we will hold a final public hearing. We would like to obtain final direction from council on the twenty-twenty-four levy amount and then uh present the ordinance on November fourteenth for adoption, and then submit a certified form to Snohomish County Assembly's Office by or before um November thirtieth. Count Mayor Pro Tem that concludes my report.
Thank you, Armina. Um does council have any questions? Okay, if there are no questions by council, do I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We will now open the public hearing at six twenty-four P M. I would now like to open the hearing for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? No. Um. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Perfect. And I see that Will has his hand up. So um Will, if you could state your name and your city of residence, please, for the record, and you have three minutes.
Will Nelson, uh Red Cedar, Mill Creek, Washington. Since the uh cash balance uh available to the city has gone from about six million to will go to about nine point five million by the end of uh twenty-four, I don't see any reason for a one percent uh increase in the levy amount. If you wish to do uh new construction and add-ons, um that would be fine with me. But otherwise, I don't see any need to uh invoke or ask for a one percent levy increase. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will. I do not see any other hands up. Um last opportunity. Um. I will now close the public comment portion of the hearing. It is six twenty-six P M. Does council wish to speak or add to the topic of the public hearing at this time? Okay?
Um I have a
Oh, yes, sorry, John. Um councilmember Steckler.
Just to confirm that we are okay with offering opinions and comments at this point in the council. Um this is a uh very important date in time. I think we should all memorize this date because um I would like to agree with Will Nelson um on this date. Will, memorize this date. Because I um I had a chance to think about your comment from last week and um you know, I I I thought about it and I I I stand firm that uh we're going to have cost increases next year, and I am concerned about those cost increases. But uh I also had a chance to think about this one percent uh increase giving us an additional forty thousand dollars uh versus um having been around in the council for a while and remembering back when the reserves were in the three million-dollar range and the concerns that we had when it actually fell below that, and now we're in a very sa- safe and comfortable range. And we we actually uh gave uh all of our citizens a healthy chunk last year, myself and everyone else on this bench included in our tax increases last year. And uh it would be psychologically and uh I think a a smart opportunity to have a year where we could say, no tax increases here. And say, you know what, we're we're going to get, we're not going to do a tax increase and um not because we don't need it, we do, but because of the reserves and because of the opportunity that we have and because of what we've been through. Um I would be in favor, which I was not initially going into this, but I am now, of of not asking for a one percent tax increase, of no tax increase this at this this particular junction. Um and let's uh if we need that money, and I think we will, we have the reserves to do it, and we have an opportunity to do this for our citizens. And I I I think it would be um a positive message for all of our residents, and I would support um not taking uh a tax increase this year.
Thank you, Councilmember Steckler. Did anyone else want, would anyone else like to make a comment? Oh, Councilmember Cavallari and then Councilmember Paddock.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I've been on the fence with this and and one thing I can always count on the city staff to do is to is to forecast very conservatively, and we've been blessed to have some incredible staff that do that, that don't put us in a corner where we're backed into raising taxes. So to maybe echo Councilmember Steckler's comments a little bit, would the forty-two K, which is what it comes down to, if we were to take the one percent, is that the difference maker? Or could the gesture be enough to say, hey, the city has decided to, you know, for the most part, freeze, not take the one percent, not raise taxes, not raise property taxes on that basis? And uh understand that inflation is now, what, little over seven percent in the greater Seattle area? Gas is the highest gas tax we pay in the country in Washington State now, so it's not getting easier. This this would only pour salt on the wound, so um I would not support a property tax increase at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock?
Just a point of clarification. Last year, we did not take an additional percentage point, correct? And I think we didn't do that, not because the staff didn't share information that made us feel like we should have, because I I do know that a couple of folks that are here on the dais and one that Because I, I do know that a couple of folks that are here on the dais and one that is vacationing in Mexico. Were very interested in taking a percentage point increase because of the, the. The increased costs of running the city. But what we had, what we decided not to do was to take that one percent. Because we had told the citizens that they were not going to experience another tax increase on top of. Actually, that's not what the, what the council had said to the city or said to the community. The inference was that property taxes would not go up as a result of the annexation. The city never said we would not add a percentage just because we needed the money. We said we weren't going to kind of take advantage of that situation. And the public speaker was very emphatic about not doing that. And we took that advice at that time. So I just want to be clear on what the facts are of last year. It wasn't that we didn't need it. It was that we wanted to honor that, that particular quasi-promise. And, and I think when we're thinking about these small increases. We're either going to be doing a lot of small increases or we're going to come back and do a big increase. And I think we, if, if we miss a month, a year, a couple of years in a row of doing that. It's going to be a cumulatively larger increase that we're going to ask our citizens. And I think we just have to ask ourselves, is it, we don't have the. Fortitude to do that now? Or we're going to pass it along to the, the next folks that sit up here to, to take that, that increase? And when I look around at cities that are around us and I watch how that, their ability to deliver services is declining. Because they can't afford basic public safety, keeping their streets clean, keeping their roads clean. Because they can't afford to do it. I don't think Mill Creek wants to be that city. Not for six dollars per million dollar home a year. Six to seven dollars is what we're asking. I just would like us to think about that.
Councilmember Stekler.
That is a great, great point and one that I, I thought about a lot. When you don't take the, the small increase, are you putting yourself on the line to have to take a bigger increase down the road? And I'd like to hear from other council members on this because I, I, I was struggling with that one also. And, and what I fell back on, and I'd like to hear other opinions on this was. Are, are, are we remiss on not taking the small increases to avoid the big increase down the road? Or are we remiss when we have this, this overage in, in our reserve? And not taking advantage of the reserve and, and utilizing it to avoid. And it's the same thing as taking the, the increase. We're going to take the money out of the reserve. I think we are. I think we are. I think we're going to need it. Don't get me wrong. I don't think we're not going to take that money. We're going to take that money. I, I, I look at these financials and I think we're going to need it. I think there's too many unknowns that we don't know. And I look at the financials of what's coming down the road. I don't see us having this. Our, our financial picture improving in the next year. I don't see our financial picture improving until after the next election, national election. So I, I, I don't think the picture is going to get any better. So yes, I think we're going to be dipping in the reserves if we don't take this. Property tax increase. I think we'll be dipping in the reserves if we take the property tax increase, to be honest with you. I don't think the forty thousand is going to do it for us. But, but I am, I am curious from other council members and encourage you to give your opinions too, because I'm only one. But I, I thought about that and I thought about that because I'm always a fan of saying, take the little hits rather than the great big hit. Because a great big hit always hurts more than the little hit. But God, that is such a huge reserve for a city of our size. It's a great opportunity to, to take advantage of the reserve and to utilize it. Because what else are we going to do with it but grow it to ten million or eleven million? So I, that's, that was where my thinking was at. But I'm only one person, so I'd love to hear from other people.
Councilmember Allison.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So I, I think the, the reserve that we have is, is a tool for us to use. And right now, I don't think that we need to raise one percent. It's, it's not significant enough. It, it goes into the bank capacity though, so it's still going to be there if we did need it in the future. But because that reserve is so high, I would not vote for an increase at this time.
Arminia, were you wanting direction from us for tonight to discuss next week? Because I know the mayor was wanting to be part of our discussions next week. So were you wanting one direction to go or were we deciding next week?
I could come back.
Because we're voting next week.
Different ordinance and then you could decide which ordinance you would like to adopt.
Yes, I think that's what I, I would recommend that we have one with the one percent and one without the one percent. And then because we're, we're not voting tonight on this. And so the mayor can contribute to our discussion and then we can move the discussion on there. And we'll, we'll have both options available if we need to move forward.
And it's the zero plus the add-ons.
Yes, yes. So I'll have two ordinances for you, one for option A and one for option B.
Perfect. That's my recommendation. Thank you. All right, if, does anyone else wish to speak then? Are we good? Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I will now close the public hearing at six thirty six P M. Moving right along. I feel like this is all I'm doing tonight. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing related to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty eight Capital Improvement. Or C I P Plan Amendment. City Engineer Dan, is it Carmody or?
Carmody.
Carmody will be presenting. Could you start us off with the presentation?
Yes, of course. Good evening, Mayor Protem, Council. I am coming back before you for the final public hearing on the Capital Improvement Plan Amendment. That we would like to propose for this year. A little bit of background, just going to go over this quickly since my third time speaking to you about this. The current capital improvement plan was passed by the council in November twenty ninth, twenty twenty two. It details the proposed projects over the six-year period. As time passes, there are items removed and revised to reflect the actual needs of the city. We have three new projects and seven adjusted projects as part of this proposed amendment. The new projects, Sweetwater Ranch Stormwater Repair. This is an emergency repair of the stormwater system in the Sweetwater Ranch neighborhood. We are estimating about three hundred thousand dollars for design. Construction costs will be determined based on an alternatives analysis that our, that the consultant will be preparing for that. Library Park Renovation. This is to fix drainage issues at a totlot. Repair and or enhance trails and re-landscape for conditions next to the wetlands. We are anticipating a two hundred fifty thousand dollars Snoamish County grant and a hundred thousand dollars from ARPA to complete this project. North Creek, North Creek Trail Paving. This is to repair sections that are damaged by, by trees and replace the trees. This will be one hundred thousand dollars Snoamish County grant and any additional ARPA funds that are needed to complete the project. For adjusted projects, the library renovation, we are updating the capital improvement plan. To match the funding sources and schedule for this joint project between the city and Snow Isle Libraries. D R C C Multi-Use Recreational Property. Conceptual design and consultation has started. We are working with the consultants currently on that. We are updating to match this current schedule and additional new funding from the state. City Hall North Building Renovation. We are anticipating HVAC roof replacement and structural earthquake updates. We've updated to match the new funds from the state and an updated schedule to push it forward to match the current funding dates. Budget adjustments, the one hundred sixty fourth Street Stormpipe Extension, we were able to perform this project in-house. So we were able to reduce the cost on our capital improvement plan by thirty six thousand dollars. The Public Works Yard Facility Value Engineering Study, we received a two hundred forty nine thousand, two hundred ninety dollar grant. And so we are moving the project forward to next year. Citywide Comprehensive Safety Action Plan, we've submitted a grant to U S Department of Transportation for, for planning. So we are updating it to match the grant request of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. From the U S D M T with forty thousand dollars of city match funding. And then our five-year pavement preservation program plan. The work is moved to twenty twenty four due to the pavement conditions that we have noted during the current design cycle for our pavement preservation program. So those are the items that we'll be amending. Are there any questions?
All night. Nobody has any questions. So. With no questions by council, do I have a motion and a second to open the public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We will now open the public hearing at six forty one P M. I would now like to open up the hearing for public comment. Do we have anyone that signed up on the sign-up sheet to speak tonight? I see Will's hand is raised online. So Will, if you would like to speak, give your name and city. Thank you.
Will Nelson, Mill Creek, Washington. Just to comment on the Sweetwater Stormwater. Repair job. It is my understanding that there is a chance that grants may be available. At a future time to help fund the repair of that project. And that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that did not sign up that would like to speak that's in, in our room? All right. With that, I will now close the public comment portion of the hearing. Does the count, any member of the council wish to speak or add to the topic of the public hearing at this time? All right. With that, do I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I will now close the public hearing at six forty two P M. And now we're done with public hearings, just when I'm getting to be an expert at the public hearing script. So with that, now I will move on to Director Todd for a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act. And a purchase of a loader vehicle. Thank you, Director Todd.
You're welcome. I'm going to find. The attempt to find. Yeah, where's the share screen? I got shrinks up to see it. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. So Keegan Postenwang couldn't be here tonight. He's had an accident and broke his ankle. So I get to fill in for him. I think I've got all the answers for you. But this is a presentation he would have loved to have made. What we're here tonight is during the study sessions to talk about purchase of a compact wheel loader using ARPA funds. So remember, there's two steps in this. First, you would have to approve the use of ARPA funds. But then as being also talking about the wheel loader we would like to purchase as well. So you may remember back when we came to you and talked about buying the street sweeper. We made that purchase decision to use ARPA funds and made a purchase decision because of the long lead time on those sweepers. Since that was done back in March and April, at the time we talked about. The choice that we made for a sweeper was not to have the scissor lift high dump capability. Because those are kind of maintenance nightmares and are more expensive. And so we chose to have a low dump height for reliability and dump into dumpsters. Which means you need to either have a ramp built up so you can drive up the ramp and dump it in the dumpster. Or you have to have a loader to take and scoop it off the deck and put it in the dumpster. So at that time, we talked about a loader. Many council members generally said, let's put the money in now. And we said, wait, we're not quite ready and not done our research. So we considered that, but we weren't ready. So now we're ready to move ahead after doing some research. And the reason we're here tonight with a little bit of sense of urgency, but we'll take as much time as council prefers. Is we found one that is available for a short lead time, as opposed to the normal five to six months you'd have to wait once you put in order. To give you a sense of what a wheel loader looks like, getting my education as well. But a wheel loader is something that could be driven on a road. It has a twenty five mile an hour speed limit. Instead of a tracked vehicle that has to be on a trailer, this is something you can drive on roads. It weighs twenty thousand pounds. So it has a lot more lifting capability than what we've got today with our mini excavator. But that gives you a sense of what the thing looks like. Some potential uses on the right is an example of the kind of things we would be doing to dump into a dumpster. On the left, it also has a fork attachment that's in the configuration you'd be purchasing. For doing things like lifting up a tree there that we're planting or maybe lifting a pallet of materials that does something, is something we do from time to time. The particular one model that the staff has looked at is a John Deere model called a three forty four P. As compact wheel loaders, kind of the largest of the compact wheel loaders. They're bigger loaders, but they're not compact. So this one, compact, is very short wheelbase. Overall length is short. Remember, twenty one feet might be how long your F three fifty truck is. It's like a big pickup truck sort of thing. And it's very highly maneuverable. And I put a couple of sketches there to give you a sense of how it can be maneuvered because of the short wheelbase. It is something you can turn around in the street as you were working on an excavation project. So it doesn't require a lot of going down the street and doing a three-point turn. It has, this particular model is big enough to have the dump clearance for the dumpster that we need now. But in the future, if we were trying to dump into a full-size dump truck. Or if we had someone come to take waste materials and we were trying to load it into a dump truck, it'd need to be a little bit taller. So the three forty four model is a little bit more money, but that's what's required to have a long-term purchase and capability that we'd like to have. Compact style, highly maneuverable, more capability than our mini for future attachments. So this thing, because it's, it's heavy enough. Of course, the guys will think of the attachments, but for instance, we've talked about our ability to do a full quality patch of pavements. You have to do what's called the T patch. You have to grind away, it's part of the top layer to make a T patch. The mini is not heavy enough to do, to handle that grinding attachments. But an attachment would fit on this kind of vehicle because it's twenty thousand pounds. Some use cases for the loader, of course, it's, it's a partner equipment for a sweeper. When the sweeper arrives in next March or April or so. We will need to have some capability to load the dump, the materials into the dumpsters. So we're anxious to do this. But it's also the kind of tool we'd use for loading and maintaining our materials bunkers. In particular, we've got bunkers up there at Dobson Property right now for salt and sand. And in the past couple of years ago, we rented a loader for the winter. Got in early, rented one for the entire time because you can't rent them once everybody else has got them in their hands. Last year, we used our excavator, which is a tedious kind of process. Picture you're taking this dumper, this scooping action and dumping it in. This is more appropriate, so it'd be a better tool for that. It's also an effective tool for street and sidewalk and trail projects. Some of the things we've done were, you know, we break up a sidewalk with picking up pieces and putting them into a truck. This is you scoop stuff up and put it into a truck. So it's much more efficient than what we've got now. It also allows you to place the two, two yards of dirt to put back in after you've dug a hole. This is how you do that. We have what's called ecology blocks. Those are great big concrete blocks that two and a half by two and a half by five feet long. They weigh so much, we cannot pick them up with our, our mini excavator. So when we built the sand and salt bunkers, we had someone else do it for us because we didn't have a piece of equipment that was big enough to pick them up. But this wouldn't allow us to do that. Don't do that often, but that's, it would be convenient for us to be able to reconfigure those bunkers when it comes time to move out of Dobson, for instance. And that's one you don't want to think about, but disaster preparedness. There was an earthquake and a big crack through a road and a big ditch. We do not have the equipment to deal with that. This is the kind of equipment a city needs. And this is, and if it's an earthquake, you probably can't borrow that time or the equipment from Lynnwood or the county. Because everybody else is doing the same thing. So in terms of disaster preparedness, this is the kind of tool a city of our size should have to be able to not. Have to say, everybody's got to stay home or you're stuck on the other side of a chasm. This has a two-yard bucket and the forks that are included in this package that is already configured. And of course, there's options for future attachments, but we'd come later for those kinds of things. One of the things I've heard Keegan talk about is what's called a grapple. So instead of picking up something with a forklift, you might choose to come down, kind of like the. The coin operating machine where you're going to grab the stuffed teddy bear at the grocery store. It'd be that kind of thing where it comes and grabs something. It's like if you're going to plant a lot of trees, you might use that grapple attachment. But again, this machine's got that kind of capability. Really, this is a twenty-year-plus kind of purchase. If you were in the construction trades, you'd buy these and use them for twenty years. They last for twenty years. In our case, it's twenty plus because we're not going to use it very many hours, but it's going to give us the kind of. In our case, it's twenty plus because we're not going to use very many hours, but it's going to give us the kind of future capabilities that as the city grows, we would need. If you said, what do you need today for the next five years? It's probably a little smaller unit. You'd save thirty forty thousand bucks. Five years from now, we'd look back and go, and wish we'd have bought the one that was a little bit thick. And it's gonna give us that kind of capability when we become a. Continue to self perform things around the city. Alternatives, you could use a smaller loaders I just mentioned, that would work now. But a smaller wouldn't be able to load that full size dump truck. We've used the mini excavator, load salt, sand, that'd be inefficient, harder to operate. The loader is much easier to train other people in the staff to use. Um, we've rented a loader in the past or you've rented for a project. But again, that's an expense that you would obviate and you'd have better scheduling capability to just. Use a loader and work on something today as opposed to scheduling it out. We talked about buying used equipment, but if you're gonna buy something and keep it forever, it doesn't necessarily make sense to buy one that somebody may have used or abused. You'd save a little bit of money upfront, but you worry about. The hydraulics going bad or something like that. And since we don't have a shop with mechanics, we're not really in a good position to buy used equipment that needs tinkering. Um, this drunk deer three forty four P is Sourcewell list. You remember Source Sourcewell is the. It's it's a cooperative purchasing agreement. Um, this one is listed, so it's like beyond the state contract. It's one that we don't have to do competitive bidding on because the state has already done that work for us. Uh, so we could have just thought about this, but for due diligence, Keegan and the guys went and looked at the case model and thought about Caterpillar and some other. Other options and said, John Deere is really the right way to go. It's not the deluxe, but it's the good adequate machine. That's it's well well known in the industry. Um, so a good good choice for long term needs and it's available now. The reason it's available now, someone ordered this. Configured it in this way. It's not very special. It's got forks and bucket, a little bit bigger than a normal bucket. And a. Couple of other technical things, but didn't add a lot of cost to it. They failed on the order. So this unit is sitting, I think, in Portland or California somewhere or other. Something like that. No, I think it's important. It's it's gonna take some time to get it. The point is it's sitting there. We heard about this because we were shopping. You guys said, I've got one right now. So we've got a hold on this and they're holding it for us. So we could, once we say yes. It would be here within probably four or five days as opposed to buying it now. And waiting five months if we wait or turn the line. So that's why we say it's available now and that is unusual. Finance details, uh I've listed it here. I put down two eighteen. It turns out that Irvin did a great job. She knew what we're supposed to do. You go back to Sourcewell and say, we were promised twenty six percent discount off of list price. Did we get that on this quote? It turns out, oops, it didn't quite give us that whole discount. So actually it's not two oh five. Something like that with with the taxes and everything else. So it's a little less. But tonight we're talking about two twenty as a not to exceed number. We'll probably come in about fifteen below that because of this. New quote we've got, we're still gonna do a little checking. She just got that yesterday. Uh, there might be other training we need to do with our accessories, but our recommendation, we put the two twenty. Um, and so that anyway, all those prices, the one eighty nine. The the list two eighteen is about right. The one eighty nine is really one seventy seven or something like that is the. Is the uh thing, but I didn't want to change it in the slide so it wouldn't. So it stayed the same in the packet. Uh, it comes with a two year, two thousand hour warranty. For only two thousand dollars more, we get a five year, twenty five hundred hour warranty, which makes sense because we won't use that many hours, but we would like to have a warranty for five years. So for two thousand dollars, it's a good deal. So this includes that extended warranty. Sales tax, delivery, upending, training, all that stuff is in what we're what we'd be asking for tonight. It is appropriate. We believe it's appropriate for our funds. It's a one time purchase. It's a long term investment. And as we continue to do more self performance instead of contracting things out, this is the kind of tool that we need. Uh, so tonight, if you care to, first of all, answer questions during the study session, we could bring this back if you if you are interested. That's old business to uh pass an ordinance. That would authorize the use of Arpa funds first, and then you would have an opportunity for resolution to authorize the city manager to execute that purchase. And so tonight we're opening for discussion.
Any questions? Um, Councilmember Allison.
Just one question. Is there any kind of special license required to operate that? Machine.
No particular license. I think it's some training to do that. I'm looking at the guys in the back who know something about this. And again, Keegan is the expert and then Jason is an expert because Jason has operated this in his private. Private sector life, but some of you guys said before. And you couldn't, probably not operate it. Yeah. They're not gonna, until they let me play, you can't even. No, I think there's no special license for this. As I said, it's road. You don't license it for the road. And so this would be escorted with one of our vehicles down the road to get it from this point to across the city. You don't do that very much. It is small enough, it could fit on a trailer, but we would not buy a trailer for it because it would take a full size dump truck to be able to pull that trailer. Because a trailer with twenty thousand pounds on it is more than we can accommodate. And for that, you would need. Commercial uh C D L licenses. We've got a couple of guys here who came to other places have C D L licenses. Uh, and.
And the streets sweeper will require a C D L, right?
Yes, it will. And so that's part of our plan is to get training for um. Operators. When I mentioned training here, I'm thinking some training on operating the loader itself would be beneficial. So we. Learn how to do it right.
Councilor Miss Deckler.
I gotta turn my mic on. So um. Let me start off by saying, I think this sounds like a great idea and I'm a big fan of using Arpa funds. To expand our equipment uh for our city. So I think it's a wise investment. So. I'm I'm a hundred percent behind this. So I was like, as I delve into these questions. Bear with me, know that that my 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 preference is I'm supportive of this. So first of all. With our Arpa funds, I know we've earmarked and this might be a question that's gonna go over to uh Laurel more than anybody else. But uh first question, Laurel, I I know we earmarked a portion of funds for. Uh staff enhancements and uh right sizing compensation levels and stuff to to to, you know, uh. Uh, kind of keep keep our staff, um, you know, right sized and and maintain that longevity. And that was the right thing to do. And then we also earmarked a number of funds for equipment needs and stuff that were uh for the city. And then we also had an earmarked amount that we wanted to use. For enhancements to the city that citizens and all of us can see. So with this equipment, is there a budget amount that we have for equipment purchases? Uh, uh, vehicles and that type of thing. Is is there a budget amount? Is this? Oh, is there a budget amount? If there is, is this over that amount? In that amount? Can you help me with that?
Uh, we did not put any funding in place for larger equipment. We did do. I believe it was a hundred and twenty thousand for the small equipment to replace the different things like chainsaws, weed eaters. Um, different hand tools. And we do not have any funding set aside for this kind of a purchase.
So what about the sweeper? Was that?
Yeah, so that was a specific item that we, I wanna say we put around five hundred thousand. Um, down for that, but it was just that specific item.
And that, but that was Arpa funds, wasn't it?
Correct.
So that was five hundred thousand in Arpa funds for just the sweeper or five hundred thousand for sweeper plus some other things?
It was sweeper and training and then like. The signage that'll go on the side of the door and things like that.
This is about another additional. Two hundred thousand in addition, two hundred thirty thousand in addition to the five hundred thousand. Okay, and I think last uh I heard the uh city manager, you mentioned we had like a. Couple, couple hundred, uh like two million left, was that right?
One point eight before this.
What? One point eight before this, so about one point six left.
Correct.
Okay, so this would be, that's good. That just to clarify for me, and this is an additional expense. But we still have some money budgeted for enhancements to the city signage. And a couple of other things, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're we're balancing out these funds so that. No one area is getting a a chunk after the fact when they're all gone and we want them all to be gone. Okay. So so that's good. So um that answers a couple of my questions. My next question. With this equipment that we're purchasing. Um, and if we were to purchase some additional equipment. That uh this may be a dumb question. You would know better than anybody, Mike, seriously. But um. We're looking for revenue streams for the city. What is the chance of as we had this add this equipment? Could we start making this equipment available to other cities to rent from us? Um, uh, on a short term basis, very short term basis for their own needs that uh because they can't afford to purchase. A two hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment. Is is this a possibility of a uh of a new revenue stream for us?
Yeah, I think it's possible, but I think just as uh I would say personally, when I go rent a tool from a Home Depot. To do a job, do I take as good a care of it as if it was my.
No, you don't.
And so I think that would be staff's concern is that we rented this to somebody else as much as we might love one of our sister cities. The fact they didn't quite do it right would be a liability, particularly again, since we don't have mechanics to check things over. And I think they would, the reasonable, I think the rate we would probably have to charge would be fair market rate, which would be the same as the rental yard. So I think, you know, I think we'd be in a position to say, we'll sell, we'll rent to you for a hundred bucks an hour. Because it's a hundred and fifty at the competitors that go in.
I would also be concerned about the liability with that and then what we would have to pay. If we were to rent that out to W C I A to have that as an opportunity, it probably would be a wash.
Yeah, uh, having been familiar with the charter business, there is insurance that you have them carry. Uh, and uh that they pay uh just to have the equipment and you're covered. So that if they damage the equipment or if they get injured. You you're actually, you do, you do real well. Um, if they do damage it or if they get injured. So there's a way to cover both of those concerns, but it is a. Here's the problem. The problem is who's gonna take care of it? It would have to be a staff person. Probably someone in your department, which would probably be another hire or somebody like that. But the revenues, if we ever took a look at them, there's a reason why people run charter businesses and rental businesses is because you make a lot of money at them. Uh, I just don't know if there's a market for. Uh, if there's enough cities for them. It just, it was, it was just a question if we ever ran the numbers in Irmina. Who runs numbers a lot is raising her hand over there and wants to say something.
Well, another consideration to Councilmember Steckler is that this funding source is Arpa funds. So we have to remember where the source is coming from. And we might be restricted by the use of that.
That's a really good, that's a really good point.
So just um.
I um.
Another consideration.
I I take it back. Okay? And I stopped talking.
Right now, I will say a parallel. For instance, we do have an interlocal agreement with Stollish County. Typically, it's gonna be, they're gonna bring. Their vector truck and their crew to do a job for us based on a work order basis. That's a reciprocal interlocal agreement. So we could flip over. The trick is we don't have a lot of guys to go with equipment to do that, but that. That arrangement does exist in the form of ILAs between. Cities, but there again, you're operating your equipment. On somebody else's job. It's a little bit different than renting it out to somebody.
We'd have to find a place to start storing all this stuff. I mean, this is good stuff. You don't want to get it vandalized. We're buying some really good pieces of equipment.
All goes into the public works yard discussion.
Yeah.
True. And this is expensive equipment.
Yeah, okay.
Um, Councilmember Allison has a question.
More just a comment. So um, when we heard about the hundred and sixty fourth street. Pipe extension project and the fact that we did it ourselves and it saved us thirty six thousand dollars, right? This piece of equipment allows you to have maybe some more flexibility to take on some more of those kinds of tasks and. Save on the expense.
Yeah, for that one in particular, we were lucky that we were concerned that the catch basin to that the. Crew connected the ditch and the pipe to that it might have been crushed or broken. And if that's the case, we would not have been able to fix it. Because we don't have enough capacity to dig a hole and pick up that catch base. It's too heavy. We would have needed this piece of equipment to do that, but we checked it, you know, we went into that job looking carefully and said, we think we'd get away without doing that, but we would have been faced with. Semi emergency renting that piece of equipment to complete that job. So good example. Thank you.
Councilmember Paddock.
Does assuming all the loader questions are over, in the the next couple of uh sessions, could we get an update on where the Arpa funds are exactly? And what's kind of been buckets have been allocated?
It's a really good idea.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, let's let's um ask um Director Todd, which one? Because we need the ordinance first, right?
So now I'm struggling. I've got.
Do you have a recommended motion for it?
Presentation.
Um, we may have, we have it in the agenda, so.
There, okay.
I I have it.
Because now I think you're switching to old business. You now picked up, you closed your study session. Now you're picking up the next topic, which was business. Is that correct?
Do we need the um? You need, we need to, right? So do we need to do the? Resolution first or the um, oh, thank you.
The ordinance first.
Ordinance first.
Okay. Awesome. Councilmember Cavalier.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance appropriating a portion of Mill Creek's uh Arpa funds. Not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand for the compact wheel loader project.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Um, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero.
Mayor Protem, I'd also like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a purchase order. And contract for the acquisition of a twenty twenty three John Deere three forty four P. Compact wheel loader with a five year, twenty five hundred hour extended warranty. Pape equipment via Sourcewell. Uh, in an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty thousand, including all taxes, fees, delivery charges.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Todd.
I'm very disappointed in Councilmember Paddock. He said he was gonna add the clause that. If Councilmember John Steckler could drive it, but he folded at the last second. Very disappointed in him.
Okay, moving on to um Scott Harder to discuss. Oh, wait a minute, sorry, I'm moving on down. Sorry, I it wasn't quite time for you yet, Scott. I'm so sorry. Almost, almost, almost. Um. I um, we had a couple, have a couple opens on the arts and beautification board. Um. And Jean Smart has reapplied and so um. No others have reapplied at this moment, so we are bringing to the council to reappoint um Jean Smart. For a um term that will expire on October thirty first, twenty twenty six. Do I have a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint uh or re uh not reappoint um renew. Um, uh, uh, the uh membership of Jean Smart on the art and beautification board. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Five zero, we're we're missing one down there for a moment. Thank you. Sorry about that. And now, I'm so sorry, Scott. Now it is your turn. Sorry, I jumped, I jumped way ahead. I was just flying right through there, so.
Adrian, my. Hello? Adrian, do you mind bringing up the uh presentation because it's not on the desktop?
Yes.
Thank you. My plan to drive is not gonna work.
How does that look, Scott?
What's that?
How does that look?
There we go. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm here to return with three conceptual designs for our larger city entrance welcome signage project. So on our next slide, we all know this. This is our current signs are seven feet tall. And a little over four and a half feet wide. So the plan is to wrap the existing signage based on the city color palette. That will maintain the current look and feel of our brand that aligns with the newly wrapped kiosks and the forthcoming directional signage along our streets and the traffic light posts. So what I'm going to be showing you. Now, in a moment, are these light larger sign concepts? Which will be manufactured, installed at locations that upcoming land surveys. Will reveal adequate space. So these might replace existing signage. Which would then be relocated to other locations that currently do not have signs or do not allow for the larger versions. So here we are. Here's option one. This is the large version of the current sign. Maintains the seven foot height. But it extends an additional two feet, four inches to extend seven feet in width. Maintains the seven foot height, but it extends an additional two feet, four inches to extend seven feet in width. Our next option here is option two. This is our flag style. Design that raises the sign off the ground and extends to six feet in width and also maintains the seven foot height. And the next slide is option number three, which is a four pedestal style design that is seven feet in width. And height and also raised off the ground like the flag design. Being raised off the ground will also decrease maintenance costs. Uh, option two and three are also more flexible for installations as the post can be lengthened to accommodate varied terrain. So. Some of the questions, so we can go back and review each of these.
So you need question, you need us to give you preferences?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Councilmember Duque. So, Councilmember Duque is ready.
Costs? I know these are concepts, but it's hard for me to, between the three, um, I, I heard one comment was about. E, um, potentially easier to install or something like that. There's a preference for it and then also maintenance if it's off the ground. So was there anything else on differences in cost or, or, um.
No.
Longevity?
I don't have approximate cost for these yet, these, since they're still conceptual designs, but from the different sign manufacturers, these are easy. Going to fall within our budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Does any, or, uh, Councilmember, um, Paddock?
Do any of these have any other proclivity towards like vandalism or? I don't know. Hiding things behind them like shopping carts or anything like that. Seriously, I, I don't know if like the, the little flag version is, is, you know, more. I don't know, kids could make more damage out of that or something like that.
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of, no. Again, uh, you know, with falling within our budget with these, these new signs, the larger signs, you know, some will go in some locations, some will be moved to fill in like. You know, these larger signs would most likely fill in that spot by Fred Meyer and one thirty-second and Boffel Everett Highway. Um, but again, these are going to have better lighting, better landscaping. Which should definitely, you know. And, and most of the locations that these signs are at, I know, I'd like to say we have not had a history of vandalism to the current signs. But maybe that's because they're old and. Not interesting enough. Yeah.
Councilmember Cavallari?
Thanks, Mayor Protem. Just out of curiosity, you said options two and three are less maintenance than one, a fixed pillar, like a rock just sitting there? They're less maintenance?
Well, just.
Wouldn't you have to mow and clean underneath them and?
It's raised off the ground, so, um, you know, the, the dirt, it, it won't, um. You know, when they, uh, do the landscaping or maintenance, it just doesn't attract the dirt. It doesn't get, um, degradation from water as, as much.
All right, I'm cool with whatever. I, I don't like two though, the flag. That's kind of ugly.
I agree. Councilmember Duque.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing. I, my preferences for number three, um, based off of what you shared, um, and I just like. Two things, I think I would. Have an issue each time I drove past. It's the funniest thing that we have. I did have a question about, I noticed the, um, the, um. And I really, I really love these concepts. Thank you so much for like providing it and sharing it and. You know, I, I, I appreciated the photos too, when it was like the difference between city of Mill Creek and the logo versus the city of. On top of the thing that was all very clear. There was a comment though about the three D logo. Is that what current? Um, at least for pedal, for option three, it says three D logo on it? So that's when it stands out a little bit, correct? My concern only with those is, um. But in reference to the one off of one thirty-second and Boffel Everett Highway, one of the things has popped off. Right? So that's why I think two meetings ago, I was like, it'd be nice if we didn't have them three D unless it's a, unless it's a visibility. Issue that the, um, that the company recommends or that you guys would recommend as you're doing your research, but. My preference would be it's flat just because I'm, I do, I have seen them kind of fall off unless it doesn't seem like it's a too huge of an expense to. Put up. I guess, once it comes off, like how quickly can we fix it?
Right.
That's always my concern because I think, is it still missing? I think on the backside, I think it's still missing the, the letter and I don't know if we would fix it because we're working on getting new ones.
Councilmember Steckler?
Um, on, on each of these signs, are they sitting on a? A concrete slab, the base?
Maybe. Again, it's still conceptual. I think it really depends on when we do the land surveys and find out what we're dealing with, what that might look like. It might not be, I think it all depends on manufacturing and the installation.
Yeah, if, if, if that were the case, I would s- strongly, uh. Support, red term, uh, a, a, a concrete base to them, uh, for a number of reasons. One longevity cleanliness, like you were talking about. Um, I think that's, that's very important that, uh, the, just the less mud slapping around, that type of thing. So. I would support that and then that, that being the case also, I like, um. I like the monument sign of number one, the, the most of all, because it just seems to carry the biggest footprint, the biggest presence of all. Um, again, it depends upon the, the, the place that you put it, but from, from my days in retail. Monument was our number one choice because if we wanted the biggest footprint possible to create the biggest presence possible. But we always took a look at how much vegetation was around us. And vegetation can be the worst enemy of a monument sign, like, um, the sports park up here. Constantly fighting the vegetation around that sign because it's constantly covering up from, from different directions. So my first choice would be number one. Depending upon if you had a problem with vegetation, then I'd probably go to number three, but I agree with everybody. I really don't like the flag sign at all. Um, that's, that's just, yeah, that's bad. Uh, but I, I like number one and I like number three. But I like number one the best. I think I just like the bigger presence. The bigger the presence, the better would be my, my, my suggestion. But a concrete slab for all of them, just for a whole bunch of reasons.
Yeah, and it's interesting you bring up the vegetation when that, when we did some of the initial research on Google Maps. You can look at, you know, the current wood sign that's, uh, by McCollum Park. And you go back to twenty twelve and there was nothing around it. It showed up wonderful and you go through the years and it's just now it's. Yeah. You can barely see it. So yeah, that is, that's something we're going to have to certainly make sure to plan for. Yeah, round up the really nice thing to use around a sign.
Councilmember Paddock and then Councilmember Allison.
And are we looking for a decision on which one to go conceptually designed? Okay. Or then I'd, I'd propose a motion authorizing staff to proceed with a conceptual design for option three. For the city identification signage project.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. So now we can have discussion. And so Connie, did you want to make your comment in the discussion?
Yes, I'll do that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
So I just wanted to point out that option three is a little thicker than option one. So it's, it's only a mere seven inches, uh, thicker, but if we're looking for bulk, three would win.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else want to have discussion? All right, all those in favor of choosing option three, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes six zero. Option three it is. Okay. Okay, now we are moving on to the consent agenda. We have the city council regular meeting minutes from October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion to pass the, or to prove the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes six zero. Now we're moving on to reports and it is up to you, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So the first report is that next week we will have the Boy Scouts local troop here to. Say the pledge of allegiance for us. Um, and also meet with the mayor literally before council meeting starts. Um, one of the. Ways that, uh, I believe one of the ways that Boy Scouts can, um, achieve merit, like merit badges is to. Have the, a discussion with, um, like local government, um, to achieve their civic, um. Basically accomplishments and then what they do is, uh, um, have a discussion with a representative, in this case it would be our mayor. Um, to discuss how, for example, maybe, um, they agree or disagree with some type of, um. Initiative or something that the city is working on. Um, and also further probably discuss also how. The, the troop will be, uh, working with the local community in Mill Creek to, um. Extend, um, their reach and, and provide their services to the community. So. Um, that will happen next, next week, um, during our November four, November fourteenth meeting. The second report is, uh, just a reminder that Veterans Day is next Friday. And if you have an R S V. This Friday, I'm sorry. Um, I believe the li- uh, library. Where the monuments are, Library Park, uh, starts at ten o'clock. Um, if you have an R S P P, please do so with the city clerk.
It's nine o'clock.
Okay, nine o'clock, I'm sorry.
Starts at ten, they want us there at nine.
Right, then the veterans parade is, is.
It starts at nine? Oh, I thought it said, it said ten. Okay, good to know.
Scott's still.
It'll be there eight thirty.
In his report.
Ooh.
And the last three, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Duque has a question for you.
Sorry, I could wait to the end of your report. I thought that was the end of it. Uh, what troop number is it?
I'm not sure the troop number, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, it is at nine o'clock, the Veterans Day. Third report is that, uh, just wanted to mention that the, uh, strategic consulting project, um. Has commenced, as you know, and it's going very well so far. Um. Rob Fenty, our consultant, has had the opportunity to meet with leadership team one-on-one. Um, we're meeting with each council member prior to their, one of the ones with Rob next week. If, um, if you haven't received emails, I believe a three city clerk has already reached out to. Regarding scheduling those one-on-ones, one-on-ones with Rob, he will be here in person on the fifteenth and sixteenth, so. Um, that process is going real, so, real well so far. And so I just wanted to report on that. And that's the end of my reports, Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Thank you. Now believe Scott was going to speak.
And for Councilmember Duque, it's troop one three seven.
We're on it.
Okay. Quick, uh, quick report. Um, the first annual trunk or treat on Maine that happened last Tuesday. Was a huge success. The event was created to fill that void of the canceled treats on main event that was hosted by the Mill Creek Town Center Association. And our trunk or treat that didn't have an adequate location. So we estimate a little over three thousand in attendance. And had about twenty-five trunks. But since that last quiz with the whole candy thing, we had to buy more because, uh, town center said. You better buy more. So we did hand out twenty-seven thousand pieces of candy. Yeah, lots of candy. And that was even with, we were competing with Venture Church and a few other trunk or treat events, so. But we had trunks, um, from Amazon Safeway, Stellar Kids, Dynasty, Town and Country, South County Fire, Snow Isle Library. Bookmobile, Elevated Sports, John L. Scott, the Police Department, Citizens Patrol. The Youth Advisory Board, if you haven't seen the pictures, we did our Jurassic Park Raptor cage. And then of course, our, uh, wonderful MC DJ Chris Jones from State Farm. So it was a great event. That's awesome. We will most likely do this forever. It just works very well. Um, so Veterans Day, we're going to host our Veterans Day celebration again this year. Focusing on the veterans using a collaborative community approach with the intent of building the best Veterans Day celebration north of Seattle. So we began preparing for this event in July and have developed a plan to showcase civic pride and engagement. So our Veterans Day committee, we used again this year. Uh, Mill Creek veterans and community members that they've met regularly about once a month, starting in July and in the last. Month, once a week. Um, and they just advised us on, on how to do things for the veterans, right? Um, so these members volunteered their time, including Barb Heidel. Thank you. And, um. Just help us do it the right way. So the commemorative ceremony at Veterans Monument will be at nine AM on Friday at the Veterans Monument. Will last about half an hour. Uh, we've got opening remarks from Air Force Tim Vinyal, Representative April Berg. Retired United States Air Force veteran and Executive Director of Heroes Cafe and Veterans Day Committee, Committee Member Gary Walderman. Um, along with Mill Creek Police Chaplain Nick Lewis. And then this year we are using Northwest Group Civil Air Patrol Squadron for raising and presenting the colors. Uh, the Mill Creek Corral will also sing the National Anthem in America, the beautiful. And then with the parade, um, started in twenty fifteen with twelve groups. It's grown quite a bit, obviously. And this year we have about fifty groups along with three marching bands. So a lot more entertainment this year. Um, and several organizations and car clubs. We anticipate about three thousand spectators. There's a forecast for rain, so. Uh, but same, same route as it, uh, we've had in the past, Valley Fitness, heading south on Main Street to City Hall North Parking Lot where there will be a. Um, impromptu miniature car show. So, um, cause we've got the Model As coming and North, uh, Mustangs Northwest Car Club. Um, that starts at eleven and I'll conclude just after noon. And the parade, yeah, so the performances are from the America Corps Army Band at JBLM, Snohomish High School's Panther Band. And the Glacier Peak Grizzlies Marching Band. Uh, the VIP tent will be located on Main Street near Spirit Halloween and we'll also, we hope. Have four World War Two veterans for our grand marshals. If they can get there, we're still working on it. So, a little bit different than last year. So, um, we hope you guys can come. We only have a few R S V Ps from Councilmember Steckler and Allison. So if you plan on, uh, showing up or, and, and of course. Sorry. You'll be there, so, um, yeah.
Question. Uh, in the past, you've had us run around, eh, with the bucket full of candy and for the kids and stickers and things like that. Do you want to do that again?
Uh, if, if you wish to volunteer, we'd love to have you do that.
Bring him a raincoat.
You gotta let us know.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause we have our youth advisory, Amazon, you know, once again sponsored this, gave us things that we haven't had in the past. We've got. Veterans Day bronze pins for all veterans. Well, not all, five hundred, so. Um, and we also have, Amazon gave us, uh, beads and flags.
Well, great.
So. We need, we need help getting those out at nine AM.
Yeah, they can start showing up early, so. Yeah, if you want us to, uh, give me a bucket full of that. And, uh, the other thing that really goes over big is, yeah, I run through them is, is, uh, ro- rolls of stickers for the kids. They absolutely freaking adore those things. Um, but, uh, yeah, the other stuff sounds wonderful too. Little blue buckets.
Send us an email. Please let us know.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I'll come down early and pick it up and hang it around. Yeah, happy to do it.
Okay.
It's just so far, it's, uh, Allison, meet you, you're, can you come early? Yeah.
You're good?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I didn't know if you wanted to show up early. All right, cool. I know some people have to work for a living. Bummer.
Oh, Councilmember Duque has a question.
So I wanted to, um, say thank you for all your amazing hard work. I'm like, lead a round of applause for everything that you do.
I think Jody is listening.
Yeah, Jody.
Yeah. Well, you guys are just incredibly fantastic and it's great to hear about, um, Halloween. I also wanted to just flag that. Um, before the trunk retreat was Jackson High School had their, um. Um, there's, and there was a bunch of Mickey Abs also volunteering there. So they went from one event where they were doing trick or treating to then go to another one. And I'm, it's so exciting to see high school students care. Right? And teenagers specifically care. And it was just, it's, it's clear that you have like a great program that you guys run with the Mill Creek Youth Advisory Board. And you have some great, um, incredible students. Obviously I see Rye every time. He's always there and I, and I always just want to, I feel like next time I'm going to just take pictures of him, like where's Waldo, kind of a thing of like where he is. So we just have a great. Fantastic group of volunteers and the Mill Creek Youth Advisory Board is great.
I actually mentioned that, that night, just thinking, they gave up their Halloween as teenagers.
Yeah.
To do this.
Wow.
To do this, which is just fantastic.
Right, that meant he was there from, him and a bunch of people from the, it started at four o'clock at Jackson High School and then went all the way through just to. Did to spend that time and that's fantastic. I wish we could give them another.
Uh, three dinosaur, the big blow up dinosaur costumes and they absolute, because you're a celebrity.
Yeah.
As far as kids are concerned, everybody wants your photo, so they had to fight over that role, but that was really neat.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. All right, now we will move on to our reports. So I just have a couple things to say real quick, just so everyone knows. Um, the council members, we all have, um, this one page, um. Printout in a nice paper card stock for you so that you can have a nice version of this. This is the, um. One page, pretty version of our legislative agenda that we have worked on, that we've already approved. And this is going to be uploaded on. And this is going to be uploaded onto our city website so that anyone out in the public can have it and download it and have a quick, easy to find version. We're going to actually create a page, landing page specifically for legislative agendas. So they'll be easy for people to find. So people look out for that so that it'll be nice and easy for, for you to just glance at. So I just wanted to draw attention to that, and that's coming for everyone out in the public. The second thing I just wanted to comment on is that I, last Friday, I met with Binta Jana from, who is the deputy mayor from the Gambia. And she was here in the United States going around speaking with women in leadership roles. And they chose to come here and talk to me a little bit about how to get women involved in politics so that, because they, she's the only woman on her council and things that we do for that and how we get youth involved in participating in community. And also just things with the, with their, with work and how to, how to get people to work. And so it was a really great conversation. It was really an honor to be able to have someone come and speak with them on having women in leadership and women on our council and just having that great discussion and bonding time with her and giving her some feedback to take back to her country. So I just wanted to let you guys know I had that conversation. So now I will move on. Trying to remember how Brian does this usually, because we were going to. So I will start with councilmember Steckler. Do you have any reports?
Uh, let's see. Yes, I know that Senator Lovick and Chuck Wright, who does some articles in some of the local papers, are going to be meeting with the Arts and Beautification Team next month to talk about ideas on how they can add some more design and architecture and enhancements to the monument park down at the library. And Senator Lovick says he, he just wants some ideas that he can take back and get funding, you know, for. So he'll be meeting with the Arts and Beautification. I also wanted to mention, I'm an old Boy Scout leader from way back. Both my boys are Eagle Scouts, yay. And having the Boy Scouts coming in here next week, that Eagle badge, that government in badge is a required badge to become an Eagle Scout. So having the Boy Scouts coming in to get that badge, this is a part of it, is meeting with government officials. And all of these potential Eagle Scouts are looking for projects. So next week when they come in, any ideas that we can come, come up with from the city of Mill Creek, anything that needs to be done, any particular projects, enhancements, park benches, projects of any, any, any imagination that you've been thinking about for City Hall, City Hall North. Great opportunity to bring these young people in and they spearhead the project, but then the entire pack comes in to complete the project. So we can get some really nice things coming on. Not a lot of things on, on my part, except I will be doing a bingo, nonprofit bingo party at North Creek High School for the Key Club kids throughout the Pacific Northwest that are expanding and doing a fundraiser for them on the seventeenth of November. And that's the end of my report. Oh, one other thing. I did want to put a shout out on this legislative agenda. This is really fantastic. I was reading through it and I, I was incredibly impressed in how far we've come, just thinking back, you've been around as long as, you know, I have. We, we've talked and talked and talked about getting a better plan on how to go after legislative support. And this is remarkable, just the, the support we've gotten. But this plan going out on a proactive basis is just remarkable. So great job to the Legislative Committee on putting that thing together and city government's support on that as well. It's remarkable.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison, do you have any reports?
I don't have any reports. Thank you.
Councilmember Duque, do you have a report?
Our Chamber of, of Commerce, the Mill Creek Chamber of Commerce, I've often had their annual retreat today. And I just wanted to say that we talked about all, you know, what are priorities and, and things that we're working on. But one of the things I wanted to flag for all of you is that I'm chairing the Government Liaison Committee. And so we're working on, on how to set up a good communication and good opportunities and connections with our, our business members with both city and then what that also looks like in terms of legislative priorities as well, taking from what I've learned from our committee and, and sharing it that way. So I'll have updates for you as that comes along. But if you have any questions about what's going on with the chamber, please let me know.
That sounds awesome. Councilmember Paddock, any reports?
Yeah, just, I don't know if anyone noticed on, on driving in, but when I came in to council this evening, there was a little bit of a line of cars, four or five at the drop box for the ballots. And one, I'm surprised that people still do that. But two, it really did, in, in all seriousness, just kind of warmed my heart about, you know, just everything that's going on in the world that we actually get the opportunity to, to vote for the people that sit up here and make these decisions. And to the people that run for office, opposed, not the folks that run unopposed, that get lucky, like Melissa and myself, but the folks that do the, do the work to lobby the community and, and to talk to them about what's important to them about, about being on this dais or being in any public office. I just, that, that is a big lift into something that's just impressive to me as a human being to see other people do. So we appreciate that.
You know, a big shout out to Councilman Paddock. Many of you may not know this, but although he's running unopposed, he was out doorbelling for another candidate that he believed in, even though he didn't have to go out, he could have stayed home and watched the Seahawks get slaughtered. But instead, he got out and he was doorbelling for somebody else, even though he was running unopposed. I, I admire that. I really do.
Thank you. Aw, you got a hug.
Knocked at my door and he didn't even use the bathroom. I mean, that's impressive.
Wow. Um, yeah, okay, moving on to audience communication again. So does anyone in council chambers, would you like to speak to, to us? Perfect. And then Will, I see that you have your hand raised again. So your name, city of residence, and three minutes.
Yeah, Will Nelson, Mill Creek, probably speaking too much tonight, but in honor of Veterans Day and all of those who served in the military and who are no longer with us, I'd like to point out that it is through their efforts, both those who survived and did not, that we are able to live the lives we live. And as Mr. Paddock said, councilmember Paddock said, cast our votes for our elected representatives. And now I'd like to relate a little bit of a story to you. About three years ago, I mentioned my experiences in escorting two soldiers who had died in combat. Well, I didn't tell the whole story, and there's a little bit to the story that I'd like to relate tonight. And the process, there's a lot of ceremony involved in escorting and the burial of soldiers who died in combat or died from their wounds. And part of that is the escort service that I provided for these two gentlemen. And when you're doing this, you wear your Class A uniform, your very best uniform, and act accordingly. And you also wear an armband, a black armband to signify that you're on this escort duty. Well, when I picked up or met up with these gentlemen on two separate occasions at the San Francisco Airport, I accessed the ground area. And as part of the ceremony, you render a hand salute to the fallen soldier as it's moved from the luggage cart to the plane and inside the plane. In other words, anytime a fallen soldier is not undercover, you render a hand salute. You may have seen President Obama several years ago doing this at Andrews Air Force Base. And as I rendered a hand salute to this fallen soldier or both of them, I glanced over to the gate to my right. And I was quite amazed that every window in that gate had a face, multiple faces, with people observing this, a little bit of ceremony. It was quite heartwarming and quite amazing. As to why they were observing this, I don't know. Some out of respect, I would hope. Some out of curiosity, some probably nothing better to do. But as I said, a very heartwarming gesture on their part and something to be remembered. And I thank you for your time. Good night.
Well, thank you for that touching story as we head into Veterans Day this week. Thank you so much for that. Okay, now we are going to move into executive session. Give me one second. Okay, so now we will go into executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to the RCW forty two thirty dot one ten one I, like, do I need to say all that? No action is expected to be taken during the executive session, and we will be returning to adjourn the meeting after it's over. The executive session is estimated to take twenty minutes. So now, do I need to give a time or just say that, that we are twenty minutes? How about we give ourselves a couple minutes like usual? So how about we say we'll be back at eight oh five?
Going into executive session at seven forty one.
Okay, so now we are going into executive session at seven forty one. We are expected to be back around at eight oh five.
At eight oh five without objection, council extended the executive session until eight ten.
At eight ten, council extended the executive session to eight fifteen.
The meeting?
No, I think, I think she said it closed.
Do I need to wait? Do I have to wait one minute? Oh, it's eight fifteen. It is now eight fifteen. Council is returning from executive session. And we will now adjourn the meeting at eight fifteen P M. Thank you.
So council is... Shoot, yeah.